Special meeting of the Sports Authority to order. With us this morning, this afternoon. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate it. This is our first time meeting in the Expo building. So we want to thank the Fair Board's Executive Director Laura Womack. We're glad also to have the Fair Board Chair Sherri Weiner with us. She's going to be joining us by WebEx. And Sherri, so thank you for being with us as well. Our purpose today is to do a deeper dive into the Speedway documents so that we have better understanding of the Sports Authority's role in the financing and future management of the debt. We also need to get a sense of how the deal impacts the community of Nashville. At our last meeting, Director McGee asked to hear from representatives from the Fair Board, Nashville SC's ownership group, and District 17 Council member Kobe Sledge. Sherri Weiner will be available only for the first hour. And I think Mary Pivara, who's here representing the soccer ownership, will also need to leave a little sooner than maybe we will finish. So Councilman Sledge is scheduled to join us around 2:00 PM. So we want to get all of them in today. And since we do have a number of guests, we will ask that when you speak, that you will give us your name and the organization that you represent. And that will be helpful to the Authority. Again, I'm going to ask the Authority to hold your questions to the end, to not hold your questions to the end. You thought I was talking about you, didn't you, Melvin? No, we don't want you to hold them to the end, but please ask them in real time. I think we will benefit most from that. So at this time, I think it would be helpful to hear first from the Fair Board Chair, especially since her time is limited. So Sherri, will you summarize what the process has looked like for the Fair Board and anything specifically that you think would be helpful to the Sports Authority?
I do. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. And I'm sorry I have to leave a little bit early. Let me just share a little bit about the process that we went through, as you asked. We were intent that we were going to make sure that the public had an opportunity to engage with us and to share with us their thoughts and their concerns. Most of us, if not all of us, had the opinion that we needed to be mindful of two primary areas. Number one, and first and foremost, was the impact on the neighborhood. The noise, as if anybody has actually been here during a Speedway event, knows that the sound is oftentimes excruciating. And we needed to be mindful of their quality of life. To me, as an audiologist, obviously, that's front of mind for me. We also need to be mindful of the effect on the taxpayers. And so we dove in really hard in all areas. And I believe if I'm correct, Monica, you've shared with them the document that Laura and I put together that has a listing of the public engagement and the scheduling and the sound mitigation of the Speedway and all the questions we asked, et cetera. So you should have that in front of you. In terms of public engagement, we held three public hearings. One was May of 2021, December of 2022, and February of 2023. Additionally, at each and every Fair Board monthly meeting, we offered the neighborhood group, as well as anyone wishing to speak, during our public hearing process, which we have a public comment period at the beginning of every meeting. We offered that opportunity for folks to share their thoughts. And it was used roundly. We also held public comment periods, I'm sorry, we have public access, I apologize, to five Fair Board work sessions: November 30th, December 21st, January 10th, and February 9th. We also had those monthly Neighborhood Impact Advisory Committee meetings separately from the Fair Board meetings, where we invited folks from the Speedway, from Nashville SC, and from the community to visit with the community, with the neighbors, so that they could ask their questions directly as well in that forum. We were really intent, as I said, on making sure that we had an opportunity to hear from the neighbors and to vet the lease agreement and the development agreement thoroughly, as well as the sound study. I think at this point, I probably can stop. I know that I probably should add one thing. Bristol held, and if I have this number wrong, I want to say they held roughly 30 meetings with a variety of neighborhood groups and schools in the area and other stakeholders that would be impacted by this. And if you look in the Excel document that we shared under public engagement, everything that I've shared with you is listed. Probably at this point, I can open it up if anybody's got a question for me at this point.
Any questions for Sherri?
One thing I'll add is, I was, I'm sorry?
I just wanted to clarify, we're not taking open questions at this time.
Okay, okay, that's great. So let me just add one more thing. I was intent, as we went through this process, that I was not going to move the process forward one inch unless I had all the documentation provided to the Fair Commissioners Board at least two weeks in advance so they had the opportunity to sit and review the data. And so everybody had equivalent and ample opportunity to study what it was that was presented to us. That's all I got, unless you have anything else you need to share.
Definitely helpful for us to understand, you know, how we got here. It looks like a lot of work has been done. Any specific questions for Sherri?
Madam Chair, I would like to know if we are going to discuss the development agreement, some of these other documents that we were given?
Set on it. We will go through those documents.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Sherri.
There you go.
Hey Sherri, I have a question. In the notes, you have decibel readings and what's acceptable, 140 being hurtful, painful, I'm sorry, I don't remember the word. What is the projected decibel level of the racetrack going to be? Is it going to be more like food processor or jumbo jet? Oh, below that, much below that. If you look at the document that I had Monica send you, and you can see where it says how loud is loud and then how to achieve attenuation. If you look at the actual takeaway numbers in the document itself that would be on Page 2, which is the Sound Mitigation Protocol, and if you look at the Sound Mitigation Plan that was sent to you in this large document that Laura and I put together, you're going to see that there are some intensity levels that are ranging around the 90s. With the appropriate sound mitigation, as is described in the document, you'll probably see those numbers come down into the 80s, like a hair dryer. Now, some of that is going to be impacted if you live near the interstate, if you live near the railroad track, if you live near Nolan'sville Road on a busy afternoon and they're doing practices. You'll see some of that level rise a little bit, but it's because of the other factors. And if you have, for example, and I'm not going to get in the weeds, I promise, but if you have, for example, two different sound sources, and one sound source is at 80 or even 75, because there are going to be some, the further away you get from the Speedway, you reduce the intensity as you double the distance from the Speedway. But if you also have this other noise, you don't add those two on top of each other. It is not linear, it's logarithmic. So if I have two sounds that are 97 decibels each, you don't double those, you add a decibel or you add three decibels for the first vehicle. And then you would add subsequent to that would only be one decibel because it's a pressure movement that you're measuring. So that to say, there are going to be some areas that are a little higher, some areas that are a little lower, depending on the distance from the property and what other sounds are in their immediate environment.
One more question, then I may be getting...
70 and 80 would be realistic. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, one more question, and I may be getting too much in the weeds regarding sound. But like, bass levels aren't measured in decibels. So help me understand how that works? Like, if there is a, I don't know, a low roll bass in an engine, is that going to be counted in the decibel count?
Okay, so let me try to give you a really quick, easy primer on sound. When we listen to a sound, it has, for basic, basic understanding, it has two parameters. One is the pitch, from low pitch, like the bass, to high pitch, like the treble. Bass sounds would be a motor, it would be a vowel sound, it would be the hum of an engine. High frequency sounds would be consonant sounds, the endings of words. It would be a higher pitched whine. And the other parameter would be intensity or loudness. When we think about pitch, that is our auditory perception of whether it is a low tone or a high tone, meaning bass or treble. When you think in terms of the intensity, the intensity is the measurement, the loudness is the perception of that measured intensity. And so when you are looking at a measurement of ongoing sound, we use dosimeters, we use sound level meters that take the entire spectrum of that bandwidth of sound from low, mid, to high, and we measure that as its one bandwidth of sound. So we don't separate the bass tones from the treble tones because that's not how we hear. We hear all of it, and so we measure it as one, for lack of a better word, bucket of sound. Does that help?
A little bit, yeah. Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah? You?
Madam Chair, I have a question with reference to the sound mitigation study. I'd like to know if, for all of the adverse sound measurements that were taken, will there be any design measures provided for the new facility to help with the sound? I'm sorry?
Absolutely, yes.
Now, who will design that?
The acquisition. So it's going to be the sound engineers and the architectural engineers that will have to design it. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Who are the sound engineers?
Jack Reitzen with Handon Reitzen, I can't remember the name of the whole company. But it's Jack Reitzen who worked on the actual study for us and put the program together with me and with the other folks that were involved in the development of the plan.
Have they indicated just how much the adverse noise levels can be reduced by design in a new facility?
Yes. When you think about the sound mitigation plan and you look at that protocol, it is going to, I'm going to open it up. It is going to be multifaceted. And so when you think about what is involved in the actual mitigation plan, we're going to look at several factors. Number one, you have to look at the repeated impact of the sound. So there's a limit to a total of 10 race weekends. And the NASCAR race will only occur once every two years. There will be a reduction in the number of practice days. There will be curfews on event start and stop times, so we limit the amount of exposure. We will be adding, they will be adding an engineered sound absorbing wall that will be at one portion of the product. We will also see a new grandstand building that will have absorptive materials in it as well, in another section. You'll see track buildings with absorptive materials as well, and additional buildings surrounding the Speedway. All of those buildings and the sound wall will come together to create the reduction in intensity that will help to mitigate some of the sound. In addition to that, there will be mandated muffler use for all non-NASCAR racing and enforcement as well. We do know from the studies that they did, based on the sound in areas specifically around the Speedway, that there's going to be a negative seven decibel reduction in all areas for local and regional events, which nears a 50% reduction in perceived loudness. There won't be really any appreciable difference between the 2019 All-American 400, for example, and the predicted NASCAR event, which is substantial. The predicted NASCAR, the non-NASCAR event, mitigated sound levels are going to be consistent with the current ambient levels, which is what we're looking for. So your takeaways, if you're looking for numbers, you're going to see anywhere from 11 decibel to a 30 decibel attenuation. Attenuation is a reduction in the sound. That is the greatest attenuation using a combination of the mufflers and the sound wall, as well as the buildings that surround the property. The NASCAR races, per se, are going to see anywhere from a 25 to a 50% reduction with no sound, with the sound wall, but no muffler attenuation. For some of the other races, some of the other local races, you'll see anywhere from a 53 to a 93% reduction in loudness perception. And then you'll also see with future construction, the additional noise mitigation. And if you look in your packet, there are heat maps in there. And what I had them do was show what the sound level was today and what the sound level would be once all this is in place.
And Sherri, if you don't mind, I want to stop you there. I don't want us to get too deep in the weeds on the sound because I want us to get to these documents. But I do think that noise and sound is going to be a topic that we're going to have a lot of discussion around before moving forward. Do we have another question?
Yes, Director Weiner, Glenn Farner here. I know nothing about sound, and so everything that you're saying wouldn't mean anything to me because I don't know what negative 9 and 11 and 37 means. But perhaps, did you attend the Nashville Superspeedway hosted NASCAR events this past weekend? Did you attend those?
No, I did not.
My question would be, if you did, is how similar was it to that sound in context of what you're saying? Because I just know what I heard.
Yeah, you've got two completely different properties, two completely different sets of acoustics. And to compare one to the other, I could say it's loud. But to compare one to the other specifically, that I can't do.
Well, I'm just saying, I attended Friday night, and it was very, very loud. I wore earplugs and went home with a headache, so if that means anything.
Well, when I go, I wear headphones. And I won't go with just earplugs because it's insufficient. And I like my hearing. And I think that for the neighbors to continue to live within the scope and quality of life that they've got right now, having to listen to that noise and not have a system in place that will mitigate it, that will be forcing them to be held accountable with fines and making sure that a fine is not enough so you can't pay your way out of this. You have to pay, but you also have to fix it. And it has to be measurable, and they have to be held accountable. And without those pieces, this doesn't work.
So Sherri, we thank you for that brief education on sound and noise. But also, what I find to be most striking is the amount of time that you all have had, the opportunity to spend getting acquainted with this concept. So as I think you said, you had five Fair Board work sessions, and this is our first. So I think we've got a lot of growing to do. And so with that, I'm going to thank you for your time. And we're going to move into the next phase, which is where our Metro Deputy Director Tom Cross and Metro's Bond Counsel Jeff Odom will walk us through the documents. You should have received memos from Tom yesterday summarizing the documents. A hard copy of each memo is in the front pocket of your binder. Ben Eagles, Senior Advisor Mayor Cooper, is also available to answer questions. And Jerry Caldwell is here, President of Bristol Motor Speedway. Glad to see you, Jerry. And just before we leave the last phase, I do want to say that the sound document is in your binder. So please go back and visit that at your leisure, and we'll take that up again. So we thank you, gentlemen, for being here. Turn it over to you all.
Well, thank you for being here to provide us with the opportunity to talk more about this proposal. I have a few remarks, and then we'll turn it over to Tom.
Would you please announce your name and your...
Yes, of course. Benjamin Eagles, I work for Mayor Cooper. We'd like to start today by explaining the Fair Board doesn't have the authority to issue the revenue bonds for this project, but the Sports Authority does. This is a way for the Sports Authority to participate in the revitalization of this historic venue without having a negative financial impact on the Sports Authority's operating budget. The Fair Board will be responsible for oversight of the project, while Bristol will have the financial responsibility for operation and maintenance. The Sports Authority was not the first step in this process. The Fair Board considered the project and voted to approve it. Your approval would not be the final one. The project will not move forward on the sole basis of a vote by the Sports Authority. The decision still goes to Metro Counsel. I appreciate your consideration of this proposal and seriously undertaking the role that the Sports Authority is asked to fulfill here. The Sports Authority serves as another check in the Metro process. In this arrangement, the Sports Authority serves as an enabling entity to a project overseen and managed by the Fair Board. I think you will find that this is a positive agreement for the city and secures a long-term future of a valuable and historic asset. Now, before turning things over to Tom, who will walk you through some of the documents, I must address the ongoing effort to misinform the public via direct mail, email, and social media about this proposal that either results from a lack of understanding or an intentional effort to mislead the public. We'd like to think it is the former, but unfortunately suspect it is the latter. It is very important to emphasize that this proposal does not include $100 million in Metro revenue that could be used for schools and other government services. As you know, these are revenue bonds paid from the revenues generated by the project, not general obligation bonds. Nashville Soccer Club built their stadium on public property, utilized public financing and tens of millions of dollars of publicly funded infrastructure improvements. That process required collaboration and good faith efforts from all parties. Geodes Park has been a tremendous success and a great addition to the fairgrounds and complements the charter protected juices here, including the Speedway. We want all facilities at the fairgrounds to be successful, and we strongly believe that Geodes Park and the Speedway can both be successful with this plan. Revenue models show both facilities thriving, and there is no discernible basis for the concerns raised that an improved Speedway will hurt the business interests of Nashville Soccer Holdings. The Fair Ground Speedway is not new, it has held concerts before, and it seems inconceivable that two or three concerts per year represents, quote, "a recipe for disaster" that could threaten the economic integrity of Geodes Park. Of course, if that were actually the case, I would have expected to hear opposition to other venues being proposed and built at various capacities and configurations across the city. Racing has been a proud part of the Nashville fairgrounds for well over 100 years, dating back one year prior to the opening of Ryman Auditorium. The Metro Charter requires Nashville honor that tradition, but also does not provide a mechanism to pay for it. This proposal brings private investment to a neglected part of the fairgrounds and would result in racing that is safer for fans and drivers and less noisy for the neighborhood by building a much-needed sound wall. The proposal also adds hundreds of parking spaces for soccer games, which has been an ongoing point of frustration for soccer fans and the neighborhood. As racetracks and other sports venues coexist beautifully in many other places, like Kansas City, like Kansas Speedway and Sporting Kansas City MLS team, for example, surely that can happen here, too. NSC has had an open invitation to provide their input into the Speedway plans through the public deliberation process at the Fair Board, but to my knowledge, never once chose to do so. Now, it certainly appears that ownership of NSC has hired a slew of lobbyists, attorneys, and political consultants to work against the Speedway proposal. It is worth remembering, the Nashville Soccer Holdings has been aware of future plans for a renovated Speedway since at least 2020 and acknowledged such in a public letter to Mayor Cooper at that time. There's clearly a substantial sponsored effort to oppose the project, so let me spend a few moments addressing some claims that have been made. Would I first like to address this piece of mail that was sent out to the community? This mailer talks about declining attendance and TV ratings. Jerry Caldwell from Bristol can talk more about industry stats. But attendance was actually up in 2022 across NASCAR, and this is especially true at races held by Speedway Motorsports, the parent company of Bristol. The graph on the mailer stops in 2016, but the 2022 NASCAR season had the highest TV viewership since 2018. The NASCAR Cup Series has a 36-race season. For comparison, in 2022, Major League Soccer had 34 regular season matches televised on ABC and ESPN networks. Those numbers of televised events are pretty similar, 34 to 36. Now, let's dive into viewership. For NASCAR, an average of over 3 million viewers tuned in per race in 2022. For MLS, an average of 343,000 viewers tuned in per match in the same year. So while it's certainly true that NASCAR TV ratings are lower than they were at their peak, context is critical. NASCAR TV viewership would have to fall nearly 90% to be comparable to MLS games. And I say that as a fan who attends Nashville SC games regularly and someone who acknowledges the tremendous success that Geodes Park has been for Nashville. We need good faith discussions rooted in facts and context. For comparison, the 1997 Stanley Cup Finals were the first after Bridgestone Arena opened. The 1997 Stanley Cup Final had a TV rating of 4.0. This year's Stanley Cup Finals had an average TV rating of 1.3. I bring that example up because despite cherry-picked TV ratings data, the NHL is thriving, and Bridgestone Arena has been one of the most successful sports and entertainment venues in the world. NBA ratings are down close to half from 1996, but NBA league revenue is breaking records, crossing $10 billion for the first time last year. The doom and gloom mailer cherry picks Richmond as an example to use for declining TV viewership. Let's use an example a little closer to Nashville, shall we? Last weekend, the NASCAR Cup race at Nashville Superspeedway, which I must point out is actually in Wilson County, to be clear, had TV ratings that were 9% higher than the same race a year ago. And despite misinformation shared by a group called CARE on social media, the race was sold out, 38,000 fans in the stands, which is about 25% more than would be able to attend a race at the proposed fairgrounds facility. Now, let's look at another piece of mail. This one claims that the plan is paid for entirely by Nashville taxpayers. That is blatantly false. The state is contributing $17 million. The Commission and Visitors Corp. is making an upfront and annual contribution by using funds for promotion of tourism. Bristol is paying a share of the design costs, as well as annual rent. The revenue bonds will have a Metro backstop, but it is flatly untrue to say the project is paid for entirely by Nashville taxpayers. CARE also claims that the money spent on the Speedway project is money that could be used for schools and infrastructure. I've also seen this claim made in a recent mayoral TV ad. It is, of course, untrue. Absolutely none of the dollars in this project are available for Metro to use on schools or public safety or infrastructure. We would never propose a deal that suggested... on schools or or public safety or infrastructure we would never propose a deal that suggested rerouting money from teacher pay neighborhood infrastructure affordable housing public safety or other important priorities to a sports deal I hope you can appreciate that from working with Mayor Cooper over the last term the mailer's third claim is that the plan demolishes the historical part of the existing Fairground Speedway the existing grandstands of a track are decades old but there is no historic designation there of any kind now the age of the current facility and the lack of recent investment does mean it is unsafe for fans and drivers and it is not ADA compliant the historic significance of the facility is the 119-year history of auto racing at the fairgrounds not the grandstands it is the geometry of the racing surface itself that is beloved within the sport of auto racing the mailer also claims that there is no direct economic benefit for the people of Nashville this is also untrue this project addresses $40 million worth of needs at the facility to get it into a safe viable and ADA compliant condition brings in significant economic impact to local businesses in the greater community and sends funds back to the Fair Board instead of being a drain on the Fair Board's budget NCBC and the state are investing in this project because they recognize the economic impact it offers the final claim is that the plan is an investment in the Nashville tourism industry not an investment for Nashvilleians who live and work here the obvious response is that this project is both an investment in the tourism industry and something that locals will be able to enjoy no different from Geodes Park which is used and enjoyed by locals and visitors alike the 2011 referendum enjoyed strong support for Nashvilleans including the neighborhood around the fairgrounds that support continues to exist today as evidenced by a recent poll commissioned by Bristol and conducted by Fred Yang of Heart Research a reputable national pollster uh thank you for your time today and and I'll now turn it over to to Tom Cross to walk through the documents
thank you again for having us I know this is uh even more burdensome than your typical morning meetings where you have to leave your day job and come and listen to us talk about it again but the good news is this is the exciting part that you've been waiting for I feel sure um I'm gonna go over mostly things that we've talked about before and mostly things that should be familiar based on other deals again as we've talked about before there is uh legislation pending before the Metro Council currently that would approve a set of documents you've all got copies of them and and I'm gonna touch on all of them but two of them in particular the five documents are an intergovernmental agreement between Metro and the Sports Authority which is typical for all of your sports facility deals and the main um elements of the of the intergovernmental agreement have to do with authorizing the Sports Authority to issue revenue bonds for a project and also uh Metro's authorization for you to pledge Metro's non-tax revenues as a backstop now the non-tax revenues are are essentially everything other than real property taxes so that document looks almost identical to other intergovernmental agreements for your other projects and certainly very similar to the one that was used for Geodes um then because of the way this project is intended to work with the Sports Authority not having a day-to-day role in overseeing either the construction of the facility or the long-term oversight of the lease um the Sports Authority's involvement is uh teed up by a lease from Metro to the Sports Authority and a lease back to Metro acting through the through the Fair Board and this is what enables the Sports Authority to issue revenue bonds for the project but it essentially just moves the property from Metro to you for the purposes of the project and then back to Metro acting through the Fair Board so those two documents are also in your packet and there there is a somewhat similar uh lease that has to do with Geodes although in that case it's only one way but again a very short uh set of two leases that are intended to set the project up so that you can issue bonds but not burden you with responsibility for overseeing construction nor overseeing the long-term project and I'm gonna ask Jeff to interrupt me here if you have anything you'd like to add so the the two main documents that are in your packet and by far the longest ones are the development agreement and the operating lease and the development agreement as I like to think of it is the document that is in operation while before and during the construction project and this is I'm sure part the part that Director Gill is most interested in this certainly been the focus of his questions about this project and the football stadium so the development agreement has to do with how they're gonna go about procuring the design builder how they're gonna get it built source of revenue and the like and the in the long-term operating lease takes in takes over when the when the facility has been completed and it describes the relationship between the parties going forward so unless you have questions about either the intergovernmental agreement or the two short leases that put the property back to you and then back to Metro um I'd like to hit a few hot points in the development agreement and as the chair said I I welcome your questions either now if you think of them um I'm easy to find by email you're welcome to ask questions that way um I'll try to distribute the questions and the answers to the group and if you'd like to call me I'd be happy to talk to you on the phone if you want to set up an individual meeting I'd be happy to answer questions in that form too um but to the development agreement so the Sports Authority is not a party to the development agreement you're just a sort of the financing agent for this project but you ought to be interested in how the project is gonna be paid for and the the current estimated budget is about a hundred million dollars 17 million of that is gonna come from a grant from the state directly to the project and 17 million is coming from a grant from the Convention and Visitors Corporation to Bristol four million of which is expected to be used for pre-development activities uh the design part um environmental work um the other parts of the project that have to go on to to enable the design so there's 34 million of the of the hundred and then the rest of it is expected to come from a bond issue that will come from the Sports Authority um and the revenues that are going to be used to pay back those bonds are a million in per year in Bristol rent escalating at 1% per year the CBC annual payment of $650,000 a year that doesn't escalate and then some variable revenues that are listed in Exhibit H to the development agreement and it's a pretty dense chart but it essentially shows the um annual rent for Bristol CBC rent and then sales tax revenues under state statute to get redirected back to paying off the bonds and also some attendance-based rent so Bristol's gonna be paying a certain amount um per patron for the events that that are held at the Speedway that is also coming to us to pay off the bonds uh a share of advertising and sponsorship revenues and um shares of gross revenues and food and beverage revenues that come in except at the NASCAR events so you might be wondering how do we how do we come up with the numbers for those variable events and we had CSL which is the same entity that was hired to evaluate sort of the similar revenues for the for the football stadium to take a look at Bristol's initial revenue projections and uh they they came back with a report which is I know on the Fair Board's website um easy to find but we can make it directly available to if you'd like to see it and it uh it confirmed most of the projections it took issue with a few um both high and low and we used their CSL's projections as the basis for determining what's the effective size of the bond issue that this could support it's also uh dependent on the interest rate and since we're not gonna be able to issue bonds until we have a price back from the design builder that's there's there's still some uncertainty about what that could be but it's likely to be in the $85 million range would be about the most of this the revenues could support so I would suggest having a look at Exhibit H which goes into this in some detail but those are the revenues that are gonna
Madam Chair Tom may I um go back to uh the beginning of of the um development agreement what I have learned well let me go back to Ben's statement he he mentioned Geodes several times and um I'm interested in knowing what Geodes or the Soccer Club contributed to the construction of the stadium uh do you do you have those figures
I don't know the exact number but I know how it worked Metro's commitment on that project was the net proceeds from a $225 million bond issued and then the Soccer Club was responsible for everything beyond that and I don't know what I can't recall off the top I had what the final construction price was but I believe it was in the 320 or 30 million dollar range and Mary
so um what we're gonna do in fact because Mary has to leave in about 15 minutes this is the perfect time to hear from what oh okay you're gonna be here okay great okay so we'll
okay so well then my question I really wanted to uh my question that I really wanted to ask is um based on what I've read uh there are four sources of funding for the proposed uh racetrack uh one is the state one is CBC 17 million the state 17 million uh the Sports Authority uh 70 million and the other funding source comes from overrun so that's Bristol they only pay for any overrun and I am interested interested in knowing uh why they are not contributing more to this project than cost overrun now it's my understanding also that if the cost overrun is to an extent that is not acceptable to Bristol they can just terminate the agreement
I'm not sure I'm gonna remember all of that but I'll try to answer the questions in the order that I remember them and taking the last one first and I think of overruns meaning two different things one of them is you have a you have a price and it just costs more than you expected it to after you've already got a deal for you know you hit quicksand or something Bristol's responsible for that but I don't think that's what you what your question had to do with they're gonna get a guaranteed maximum price which under the development agreement they're supposed to deliver no later than November 15th of this year if that guaranteed maximum price exceeds the sum of all of those revenues that you just mentioned then they will have the option of either agreeing to make up whatever the gap is or terminating the project
correct that's my understanding right I'm just curious as to why uh they don't have more skin in the game than just a decision on what the cost is over what they would want to pay
well you know obviously it'd be great if they had agreed to pay for the whole thing but this is a negotiated deal and you you know you get some of the things that you want and you don't you don't get some of the other things that you'd like to have this is um you know you've heard Mr Eagles talk about what what Metro's responsibility is to conduct racing at the racetrack what the the current deferred maintenance tab is likely to be this is a proposed solution to that problem
I'll let you continue I still have more questions I'm I'm just curious
I'm I I'm not sure I got all the way back to the first question
okay wait
so you want me to go ahead or do you have did I forget something
Director Gill I think uh Mr. John Cooper has something to add to this conversation that he thinks will be helpful
John Cooper with Holland and I representing Bristol just to I mean there are some things that that Tom can't say I mean Tom's here to talk about the deal and what it is and what it isn't I would point out that this is not the soccer deal um there was not 10 acres of virtually free land to develop to monetize as part of of this proposal it's also significantly smaller um and under the soccer deal the team ownership had agreed to cover cost overruns over the 225 million it ended up being 300 whatever million and they covered that the same situation applies here if as as Tom said if the numbers come in and they're gonna be significantly over that the team has the uh the Bristol has a decision to make of whether to pay all of that or terminate the agreement so it it in that way it is similar thank you
just for clarification was that option to terminate available for the SC or did they come in and just confirm that they would do that
I don't uh I have a long-winded answer to that they uh unfolded on a different timeline than I think everybody expected and I think by the time that everybody's everybody really had to finally commit they probably did have a pretty clear idea what the what the project was gonna cost I don't think at the time the development agreement and lease for that project were entered into or first agreed to that uh there was an expectation that the facility could be built for 225 million but I don't you know but but again because it unfolded more slowly than everybody expected by the time memos were absolutely hard they probably did have a pretty clear idea what it was gonna be
right
put 25 million into the okay I I'm reminded that they also put uh soccer team also did put 25 million into the project
thank you any other questions
yeah yes Madam Chair I didn't uh Director Gill what was the the numbers you threw out who was responsible for different money and anyone from Metro Finance here today no one okay uh the numbers in the agreement is um 17 million for CBC uh 17 million for the state and uh 70 million for Metro Sport uh for Sports Authority is that
I think that's where I missed I think it's Sports Authority is on the hook for more than that
can I clarify that there out of the bond issue there are some some costs that you have to pay the cost of the issuance itself plus there's gonna be a um a debt service reserve fund that comes out of that equal to the maximum uh annual debt service which varies a little bit but the maximum debt service throughout the life of this is 7 million something so 7 million gets set aside out of that bond issue to make sure there's always gonna be enough money to pay debt service and then there's also gonna be a capitalized interest fund that comes out of the initial bond issue which is also gonna be about 7 million that allows you to pay interest during the construction project which accumulates even though you don't have any revenue coming in to 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 pay so the bond issue is gonna be about 85 million if interest rates stay about what they were in May of which 70 million or so will be available for the project construction budget is that
what what is the total bond issue that we'll be looking at
I can't give you an exact number because we don't know what the interest rate will be at the time it'll be you know the the most that can be supported by these revenues it's expected to be about 85 million
85
yes thank you again of that about 70 million should be available for construction
Madam Chair I still I still have uh some interest in knowing what Bristol is putting in the pot um they can walk away at a point when they get to the when they get to know what the what the facility is gonna cost how much money will the three funding sources have will have spent at that point uh that will allow them to walk away how much how much will we be
the portion of the CBC grant is going to be used for pre-construction costs I'm sure I'm sure Bristol's spent a lot of their own money but the pre-construction budget is expected to be covered by a portion of the CBC grant not to exceed 4 million dollars if it's more than 4 million Bristol has to pay that but if things go according to plan uh 4 million of the CBC grant will be used for pre-construction costs this should enable them to get a GMP
and does Bristol know how much or have any idea of how much they will spend um by the time the construction documents are completed at which time perhaps they will know for sure whether or not the cost overrun is something that they can accept or not
I I'm gonna have to defer that to somebody on the Bristol side I know they spent some money out of their own pocket at this point but the 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 fees that are going to be owed to the to the design builder are mostly expected to be covered by the C a portion of CBC grant and and I'm sure Bristol will be happy to talk to you about how much they they spent on the project today
okay and just so I don't forget you mentioned that I'm interested in certain things I I am still interested in the uh SMWBE participation I'm interested in whether or not Bristol has been following Metro's procurement uh procedures and policies uh I read in in the in this document that uh I don't know I could I could go to it and uh discuss that with you in a minute but I I do want to discuss that
okay well we're we're almost to that point that they
I think there are a couple of other questions before we move in a different direction okay so uh Mr. Cooper did you have an answer
I did
okay he can speak to your question about Bristol's participation
uh I I'm told that Bristol anticipates to spend 4 to 5 million dollars before deciding whether they want to move forward or not and that that is money that they're just gonna spend and if if they walk away then uh it it's on them
did you say 4 to 5
4 to 5 between 4 and 5
between 4 and 5 uh plus what CBC is giving what a Uh, plus what CVC is giving, what a maximum of four million? That will be, uh, eight, eight to nine million?
There will be continued costs pre the construction once they get to a GMP, but, but yes, that's, so I guess what I'm saying is Bristol's gonna be out that money, four to five million dollars, if they decide that they don't want to move forward.
And, and the CVC will match what they will be out of, because they will be out of that much also.
CVC has agreed in the documents to set aside four million of their seventeen million that can be used for pre-development costs.
We have a question from Director Farner?
Uh, yes. Um, um, he, he, here's, cut to the chase. If, if Sports Authority issues eighty-five million dollars with the bonds, how are we gonna pay that back?
So the sources of revenue that are intended to?
Yeah. And, and, and walk through the numbers somewhat, what substantiates them? When we reviewed the documents for the, uh, for the, for the stadium project, um, it was very informative when they walked through the, the exact projections. I know on that one was a hotel, uh, tax or something, wasn't it Jeff? So, you know, we, we saw those projections and it was clear that that revenue was there and dependable to pay the back.
Okay. Um, I hope that your binder has all the five of the documents in it, but the one I'm gonna refer you to is Exhibit H to the development agreement. And it's probably the very last thing, yeah, it's the last two pages of the, at the back of the development agreement. It's a, it's a chart. Print too small for me to read.
I got it.
Okay. Can, can I, can I see a, a nod or something? So I'm pretty sure everybody else is on them. Yeah, I wanna make sure everybody's looking at the same piece of paper though. Has everybody found it?
Yeah.
Everybody's good? Okay. So there's a, there's a chart there.
It's under the green tab Speedway Development. Go to the very last page. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I'm, I'm gonna assume everybody's good there. If, if, that, that shows a projection for years one through thirty of the lease for what the revenues are expected to be. And there's a little bit of variability there because some years include a NASCAR cup or expected to include a NASCAR cup race and some do not. But just looking at year one, that, you know, the first year of the lease, uh, annual base rent is a million dollars. The, there's, the, the projected attendance base rent is obviously depending on the number of people who come to these events that are gonna take place at Speedway, expected to be one point six million. This is a number that has been, uh, vetted by CSL, the company that we hired to take a look and, and verify whether they thought the projections were reasonable. The next one is the CVC use payment. That's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year and it's fixed. That's in, that's in a contract, which is another exhibit to the development agreement. The next category is advertising sponsorship revenue. This is another one that we had CSL take a look at. They, you know, they, they can sell, uh, signs around the track and they can sell some sponsorships, though it doesn't work quite the same way that apparently does like naming rights for stadium or something like that. Metro is entitled to the first, uh, six hundred thousand dollars of sponsorship revenue. And CSL, CSL projects that the numbers in that column are what we would expect to see. Next one is gross revenue share and the column after that is food and beverage. We get a, we get a certain percentage of the revenues generated at non-NASCAR events. Again, these are numbers that CSL has provided some support for. Sales tax revenue, same, same thing. Sales tax on, on things sold at the stadium, including tickets. So that comes back to the project. So if you look down, you know, years one through thirty, again, the variability has to do with whether or not a NASCAR race is projected to be held in that year. And also, um, some years they're expected to be more music events or fewer or, uh, monster truck events, you know, there's, they're projecting, they're based on projections for the, the events that Bristol expects to have. So that's, those are the revenues that we expect to be available to pay the bonds. Any other, any other questions on that, on that?
On the, on the next page where it talks about, uh, bond construction proceeds, so are you using some kind of projected interest rate since we don't know where we're gonna land with bonds?
The, the, the little table just below where you're looking at shows a projected.
At five point three?
Yes. And that there's some variation in the interest rate. It's not like one big thirty-year bond is a series of bonds and the interest rate is a little different throughout the term. Um, and again, we're not, that's a little bit of a moving target because it's, it's crept up over the last year or so and it may continue to creep up. We wouldn't, we will not be issuing bonds at least until we know the guaranteed maximum price, and they don't have to deliver that until November.
And they will be taxable versus taxed exempt?
Yes. And Jeff can tell you why that's the better choice here if, if you're interested.
Um, I, I, Jeff Holden, Master P. Sims, Bond Council, Metro and Sports Authority. Long story short is when a facility has both private use, which you have here in the way of the, of the, the lease to Bristol, coupled with private payments and, and sort of almost all of these payment streams are private because they result from Bristol's use, the bonds have to be issued on a taxable basis. And so that's, and, and that, for what, for what it's worth, you know, the MLS deal was structured in the same way for the same reasons.
Hey, Tom, this tax revenue on the scale there, is that, uh, is that to a certain area or is that just all sales tax?
Uh, state and local sales taxes for things sold in the, in the facility.
In the facility?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We, uh, if you got, uh, further questions about Exhibit H now or later, we're happy to, happy to take them up, but I'm gonna move on. And the next area is, I asked John to stay up here because he's gonna, he knows exactly the, the processes that Bristol has used to date, but the, under the development agreement, they are required to engage a design builder, which is, uh, I think a delivery method that the Sports Authority probably has not used yet, though, though Metro has on several successful projects. It's maybe a little bit faster than construction management, which is the process that we're using on the, on the NFL stadium. But they did use a competitive selection process as the agreement requires. And the, the outline of the process, they did ask us to approve, which we did. And they have selected a design builder and the selection committee included not just Bristol people, but some Metro people. And I'm, I'm gonna ask John to fill in the gaps there and he can, he can, again, he can tell you a little bit more about the specifics of their process.
Thank you. So the process, procurement process that you see that's included as part of the development agreement is almost identical to what you see in the Titan Stadium Development Agreement. I know because I did both of them and I copied my own work. So the, the intent and, and the requirement is as closely as possible to follow Metro's procurement process. This is a public facility and therefore you, under state law, you have to use a public procurement process. Um, so we made sure, and, and as Tom said, we had Metro legal review and, and make sure that, that the process we were going to follow is consistent with that. Uh, the, um, the design builder has been selected. Um, there is no guaranteed maximum price yet. That's what they're working on now, which will be done by November. Once we get to that point, then they will start selecting the contractors and, and subcontractors necessary to actually complete the renovation project.
I have a question with reference to, uh, uh, this procurement process. On page eleven of the, um, development agreement, uh, Article E, uh, it says Bristol agrees that all development activities and all project improvements shall be procured consistent with the processes approved by the Metropolitan Director of Finance and Law. Now, was the Director of Finance involved in this?
The direct, and I'm, I'm not sure if I understand your question exactly. The, the Director of Finance is involved in several places in, in the deal, including either the Director of Finance or a designee on the Speedway Oversight Committee, which is involved in confirming, reviewing the designs as they're, as they're underway. Can you, can you give me the reference to the paragraph you're looking at again?
I'm looking at, uh, Article E on page eleven. And I, I, I'm, I'm curious because, um, I, I, I am interested in knowing if the purchasing agent, uh, was involved in the process. Is purchasing agent under finance?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, was, uh, was the purchasing agent involved in this process?
The, the RFP was not released through Metro Purchasing, that, that Bristol released it themselves. I, they, they may have consulted with Ms. Lane. I don't know if they did or not. I, I, I know they're, they have talked to her some on M W B E requirements. Do you want to elaborate?
So similar with, with what we're doing with the Titan Stadium, um, Michelle Lane will be involved in her office, the BAO Business Assistance Office will be involved as we get to the subcontracting and, and actual contracting out the work for the project. And so, yes, they, they will be involved and, and we will have, uh, regular points of contact and they will be setting the goals, not Bristol. It, it will be Metro that's determining the specific goals for the specific areas as allowed under the Metro Procurement Code.
I'd like to know why, uh, the purchasing agent, uh, has not been involved before now.
I think the, the answer to that is, is it was too early. I mean, they were, uh, you know, as this was going through the Fair Board process, that's when they started, and, and the Fair Board approved the development agreement, that's when they started the work as allowed by the development agreement to undertake the procurement work themselves. So essentially Bristol is acting as the purchasing agent on this prop, on this project. Um, so like with the Titan Stadium, uh, Ms. Lane and her office will be consulted throughout the project as it, as it gets built.
Well, from my, from my perspective, I, I think I was a, a little bit behind the, uh, uh, the process with the Titan Stadium, and that's why I am asking some of the questions that I'm asking now. Um, the Article E here states that, uh, uh, that Bristol agrees that all pre-development activities and all purchasing improvement, purchase project improvements shall be procured consistent with the processes approved by the Metropolitan Director of Finance and Director of Law, and that comply with applicable law, including without limitation the requirements of Title Four of the Metropolitan Code of Laws. Now, Metropolitan Code of Laws, um, addresses, uh, SMWBE, uh, uh, participation, method of source selection, competitive sealed proposals and sole source procurement. And I'm just, I'm just wondering if they were, you know, if, if they followed the.
Yes.
Law as.
They did.
As indicated that they did. Now, uh, also, I guess getting to that, I requested from, uh, Bristol and received, I requested a list of all the firms that were engaged, uh, to date.
Yes. So, uh, that, that information is being compiled. Matthew Kuhn is compiling that. He is on vacation this week, otherwise you would have that information today, but he gets back next week and, and you will have that. You submitted a chart or a list of things that you wanted filled out and that, that's what they're doing.
Yeah. Correct. I, I gave that to him after I got a list. I, I had an email exchange with him.
Right.
And, uh, he gave me three names. Uh, that was the general contractor, I'm assuming the design builder, uh, the architect, uh, and the civil engineer. Those are the only ones that he gave.
And there, there will be a robust list that you get when he gets back. I just don't have it and, and he's not here.
So, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm understanding then that there are other firms that are engaged?
Yes, sir.
So as not to delay time.
Okay.
Let's let it provide that information for us and then we can circle back. You'll have an opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Okay. Just a, a few more things on the development agreement and we'll move on to the lease. This is a, again, a design build project, so the, the idea is you have a, in this case, I think a joint venture between a, a design firm and a construction firm that work together with, with this design oversight committee that's composed of the executive director of the Fair Board, the chair of the Fair Board, and the representative of Metro's Finance Department to make sure everybody's happy with the design. And, uh, once they get to a final design or something close, they'll propose a guaranteed maximum price, as would be true on a construction management project. And sometimes there's some back and forth to try to, um, adjust the price or adjust the design a little bit to get the, to get the, the price within budget. But eventually, if you, if you can agree on the GMP, there's a change order that establishes that as the, as the maximum price in the project. And after that, the construction manager is on the hook if it goes over unless you have asked for changes. Again, the proposed schedule is some initial plans and specifications this summer and then once, uh, they've gotten some direction, final plans roughly the middle of November along with a proposed GMP. So we, we would need to have that number in hand to make the determination about whether the project is financially feasible, since we, we know we're gonna have a cap on what, on the, the amount of bonds that we can issue. So assuming, assuming we get that and everybody agrees, bonds are issued, certain amount of money in the construction budget, then they will supervise the construction going forwards with some oversight from the, the three people that I just mentioned. Do you have something to add or, or correct?
I have a question. I'd, I'd like for you to explain on Article Five, uh, Construction of Project Improvements, it says, "Construction Responsibilities: Bristol shall cause the project improvements to be constructed in accordance with the final plans in direct consultation with and approval of the authority." Could you explain that?
Yeah. You, it's, the, the authority is a, is an important player here and you will need to know that the project that you expect to be built, that will support these revenues that are intended to pay off your bonds, is in fact being built that way. And so you can, you can designate your executive director or another member of the board or, or some person who is not a member of the board, um, on, on other projects, you've used consultants for this role, to make sure that it's being built as, as everybody intends for it to be.
Okay. And the, uh, I am skipping about in this page sixteen, um, I'm, I'm guessing a subarticle, uh, L, Metro Construction Representative, the Fair Board may retain a representative to assist the Metropolitan Government with questions or any issues in connection with, uh, the project improvement work. Could you elaborate on that?
Yes. This is similar to a provision in the stadium development agreement that we talked about. We, the Metro has the right to hire somebody at, at the cost of the project to make sure that you, that Metro has eyes and ears out there, somebody who understands what's being built, what the plans require, make sure that, uh, you know, not, not the, like the day-to-day, uh, project oversight, but somebody who's familiar with the project and, and such that when changes come up or problems occur, they can relay those to the, to this Fair Board and the Sports Authority and, you know, make sure that, again, the objective being to get what you're, what you intended.
So that's the, uh, Fair Board?
It's the Fair Board, but I'm sure they will, they will, uh, if, if you would like some input on who that should be and you would like that person to come to your meetings as well and, and, and do monthly reports, I'm sure that, that can be arranged.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, after, after you have a GMP, money's in hand, project gets built, I, I think that they are looking at something like a twenty-four month construction schedule. Their, this normal construction, um, provisions having to do with punching the project out, finding things that look like there might be problems and getting them corrected, which Bristol's required to do. And I'll say one last thing about it, and that is if for some reason the project does run over budget for no reason having to do with the, the design builder, Bristol at that point would be on the hook for whatever that cost is. Um, and then one, one other thing. It's, you know, changes are, changes always come up. If Bristol wants to make changes during the project, they, they are gonna, they're gonna have to cover the cost of it if it causes the, the budget to go up. Um, they can adjust, um, make some adjustments, but they can't ever go below the minimum project design standards. design standards, which is Exhibit G in the, to the development agreement, so just before the one we just looked at. But it's also sort of an important document because some of the money-making elements of this project are not just the track. There's supposed to also be banquet building where they can have, where they can host events and some of the revenues that are in Exhibit, reflected in Exhibit H, are going to be generated at that building. So we want to make sure that the facility, as designed, is going to exceed those minimum design standards. Any other questions about that document? And if not, we'll go on to the lease.
I have a question.
Sure.
So I think in the past, we have had an opportunity, especially with the type, I think initially, that costs got in play and we saw some things value engineered out the plan. Are there some things that are not negotiable, non-negotiable?
The, what is shown in Exhibit E is really the list of non-negotiable items. It has to have a minimum of those elements. Once you get to the G M P, there's no more value engineering at that point. Once we've agreed on a final set of plans and specifications and what the guaranteed maximum price is, we should get that facility.
Hey, Tom, on the memorandum summary there on Item Seven, Page Three, says that Bristol will provide monthly status reports to the Fair Board and Metro. Who in Metro?
Well, those would typically go to the Director of Finance, but again, if you would like monthly status updates to this body, we will definitely see that that happens.
Okay, thank you.
The lease agreement is, even more closely resembles other leases that the Sports Authority is a party to. Again, you would not be a party to this one, but it's 30 years, which matches the term of the bonds. And the revenues that are intended to pay this are shown in Exhibit H. But again, the rent is what Bristol pays, a million dollars a year escalating at 1%. C B C, $650,000 a year, a bunch of variable elements, again, that we had, C S L, take a look at. And then some contingent rent that is based on whether or not they actually adhere to the commitment to bring NASCAR races. They're not absolutely required to do that because they don't have control over that, but there's a schedule in the lease that calls for them, anticipates a NASCAR race every other year. And if they're not able to do that, then they have to pay some contingent rent to make up for the difference in revenue that we were expecting to receive in those years. So there's a correction in there, just in case they're not able to meet it. Now, the expectation is that they will. Obviously, everybody's expectation is that they will be able to bring NASCAR races back to this facility. Question?
Tom, you said earlier that the firm that did the study came back with, that the revenue would support a maximum of $85 million debt service?
What they said was the revenues that are projected in Exhibit H are reasonable. So we took that from there. We have a financial advisor that helps Metro in bond issues and helps us figure out what's the interest rate, how big a bond issue could those revenues support. So C S L did not do that part. Hilltop Securities did the second part of that. So they're the ones that say, here's what, that much revenue could support.
They just said that this amount was reasonable?
Yeah.
Not, not that this revenue stream will support $100 million or it'll only support 70 million?
No. So these are the revenues that you can reasonably expect to see coming out of this facility.
Okay.
And along those lines, I know there are a number of ways to do projections. Do you have any idea what process they use? Was it Monte Carlo or?
They, this firm sort of specializes in sports facilities and revenues. And again, this is the same firm that has done this similar, almost identical work on the Titan Stadium, just like how much revenue can you expect based on how many people live in your city and how many people live a certain distance away and would be willing to drive to it. The report, I know, is on the Fair Board's website and I will make sure that your director has a link so you can take a look at it and you can see their methodology.
Okay, great.
I'm not an expert, I couldn't duplicate it, but they do, there is a fairly extensive evaluation of the population of people who'd be interested in races, both within the county and within a certain distance, how much you could expect each of them to pay, what attendance figures you'd have for local races, regional races, a NASCAR race. The NASCAR races are the only ones that are expected to sell out among the races, in the second series, the truck races and things like that. Those two would be expected to sell out, but you wouldn't expect a local race or even a regional race necessarily to sell 30,000 tickets. So based on what their expected attendance is, how much stuff they buy, merchandise, food and beverage, here the tax revenues that come off of that, here the sales tax revenues that come off of that, here's the percentage, food and beverage and other stuff that Metro would get. So that's how they do it. But I'll make sure that there's a link that gets distributed to you guys so you can take a look at it.
That would be great, thank you.
The, it's a net lease, so Bristol's required to cover basically all the maintenance expenses and everything else. Metro's not really chipping in anything beyond that. I would suggest a look at the waterfall. Every lease has one, but where the revenue, how the revenues get distributed, you know, the number one priority is paying off the bond debt. Number two is making sure you can pay the bond debt next year. So there's a debt service reserve fund that gets filled up at the second step in the waterfall. The Fair Board is losing some revenue-making opportunities as a result of this project. And so one of the stops in the waterfall is to pay them back a little bit of the revenue that they're losing as a part of this, because for the four main event weeks, Bristol gets 100% of the revenue for everything. There is some limited potential for there to be an additional payment to Metro if there's money left after all of those things have been paid. Always hopeful, but we're trying to be cautious about what the projections are and the size of the bond issue that they can support. Some of the things that Sherry Weiner, the director or the chair of the Fair Board, talked about, as far as operating standards, which I'm sure this board is interested in, but the Fair Board was intensely interested in, have to do with muffler use. Mufflers are going to be required on all automobiles except for the NASCAR races and practices, which is different than the current arrangement. And there's a pretty restrictive set of curfews that apply to everything but NASCAR races, so when practices can be held, wet days of the week, whether or not school is in session the next day. So the Fair Board spent a lot of time evaluating those curfew standards, operational standards, amplification and time limits for when they can have amplified music, for example, to try to be a good community partner.
We have a question.
Sure.
So this doesn't feel like what we normally do as the Sports Authority. We aren't facilitating, we aren't doing anything except giving our bonds, doing the bonds. And what is going to be the capacity of our bonds moving forward when other things come between us? How much of our bonds are you sucking up for something we don't normally do?
I'm going to give a limited answer to that and then pass it along to Jeff for elaboration. But the revenue-supported bonds sort of stand on the project that they're issued for. If you had 100 projects where the revenues that were projected that, to be delivered by that project, were easily supportable, you could do all 100 projects. People will always loan money on that. The limitation is if Metro is backstopping those with its non-tax revenue pledge, and there would be a limit to that because the size of that pot is finite. But if you had, if you were going to build a stadium, for example, and the projected revenues every year were 10 times what your debt service was likely to be, you could do as many projects like that as you wanted to.
He said it exactly right. It's, the primary revenue streams are facility-specific and don't constrain you at all from other facilities. The backstop is constrained, and if you use it in one place, there is a limit to whether you, you know, then that is less than you can use in another place, which is, I'm not adding a thing to what he said.
Well, that's, I've gotten through both of the memos and I'm happy to answer questions you have now. Again, now, later, you call me on the phone, we set up an individual meeting, whatever you would like to do. I know this is a lot to put on you and these are dense documents, although I have to say they're a little bit less dense than the ones for the stadium. But we appreciate your patience and let me thank you again for coming all these times and listening to Fairly Drive stuff. I know you've got important things to do and we do appreciate it.
Well, we certainly appreciate both of you and I know that we've taken in a lot today. We may not have immediate questions, but definitely we'll circle back, have additional conversations. And I know before you were open to one-on-ones if the directors would like to reach out directly. That's still okay?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. So at our last meeting, I think it was Director McGee who was interested in hearing how soccer ownership group feel about this potential deal. So we have Mary Cavara and she can share some insight about S C.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Sports Authority Board members. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you today. Be happy to answer questions, but I'd first like to make some remarks. We're not opposed to racing at the fairgrounds. Since we began our M L S journey over six years ago, including with this body, we've consistently stated that we support all charter-required uses of the fairgrounds. Our position and our actions remain the same. We've always known that there'd be racing on the site. We support the local racing that occurs today. One of our key observations is that there appears to be a lack of communication and engagement with other stakeholders, most importantly, the neighbors and the surrounding community. Having an active venue in a vibrant neighborhood is a delicate balancing act. We have spent years working to gain the trust and understanding of our neighbors and it's a hard thing to do. We know we're not perfect, but we're still trying to learn. The stadium's only been open for a year. We don't take that for granted. Multiple neighbor and community groups in the area have told us that they have not had a seat at the table. I'm sure they'd be willing to share your thoughts, their thoughts with you as well. Adding another 30,000-seat venue, less than 300 to 500 feet from Geodes Park, depending on how you measure it, without significant work with the neighbors to make sure that they're protected, puts all fairgrounds partners at risk. The venue as proposed will add a great deal of noise, although we understand the noise mitigation strategies. Hopefully, the number of race events will stay the same. However, we do know that four of these events will be week-long racing events. That will greatly impact all of us on the fairground site and the community that surrounds us. I will now address some of those questions related to the Geodes Park stadium cost and just have a couple more remarks after that. I know it's been a long afternoon. So the actual cost of Geodes Park was 326 million. It was 214 million of net revenue bonds because part of the revenue bonds were used to pay for the cost of issuance as well as capitalized interest and 112 million dollars of cash provided by our ownership group. In 2017, when we were working on these documents, we engaged qualified cost estimators and we just had conceptual designs for the stadium. The estimated cost at that point was 275 million. After the construction manager, Mortenson Messer, was engaged in late 2018 or early 2019, we learned that the actual cost would be closer to 335 million, not through any fault of anyone's. It was just construction costs had raised and that, once we had the actual contract run place, they were higher. In 2020, I'm sorry, in 2020, the current administration increased our obligation by 19 million, so the total cost of the project became 354 million. As I shared with you last summer and just did recently, the actual cost of 326 million was $28 million favorable to budget. It was ahead of time, we exceeded our D B E requirements, and we also had a stellar safety record. But enough about the stadium. We do have some concerns about the certain financial aspects of this plan, not only that it affects our business, but we believe all Nashville taxpayers. Nashville Soccer guarantees the revenue bonds used to build our stadium. This is after we invested over $100 million in the stadium and paid all of our pre-development costs. We are 100% responsible for the cost of the stadium construction. So when people talk about the Sports Authority issuing the revenue bonds, we have to pay, make all the debt service. And by August of this year, there will be three debt service payments that have been made. My estimate is maybe about a total of $9 million that we funded. So we're continuing to honor our obligation on that and look forward to doing that over the years. We were willing to provide this taxpayer protection because it was never imagined that Metro would build a competing 30,000-seat venue directly next door. In fact, when we were negotiating the stadium lease with the city, the idea that Metro would build a similar-sized facility next to the soccer stadium was far-fetched because all sides were aware of what it would take for the stadium to be successful. And along those lines, I'd like to clarify the reference about the 10 free acres. Nashville Soccer Club was the first professional team to fully pay for their venue. During the process, we also learned that activating the stadium site was a really key component to the overall success of the stadium. The administration proposed that 10 acres adjacent to the stadium be used for a mixed-use development. This will generate, this, which is currently under construction, is generating property taxes of which nothing had happened before that. Under the legislation at that time, 50% of those property taxes go to the Metro General Fund and 50% to the fairgrounds. In addition, during that time, we also entered into a community benefits agreement. This will provide mixed use, I'm sorry, this will provide workforce and affordable housing as well as other benefits. And it's been a number of years since I've looked at it, but I think the number was well over $70 million, an amount that exceeded the value of the land at that point in time. In contrast to the soccer stadium, the Bristol Motor deal is very different, as you've heard. Our observation is there's very minimal amounts of their cash that are invested in the transaction, but you've just heard about that from the experts who know the documents. For us to be financially successful, we also rely on non-sport events, just as the racetrack will need to. We think it's possible that the city could be incentivized to steer non-sports business to the racetrack because Metro will be on the hook that if somehow there's a shortfall in these revenue streams, hopefully, none of us ever have to experience something like the pandemic, but we certainly know what that did to attendance and everything, to sports and other things across our country and the world at that time. And when we talk about non-sports business, concerts is one of the primary activities and there's only a certain number of acts that can fit into a 30,000-seat stadium. So everything's not completely fungible there. We believe there are a lot of unanswered questions in relation to this plan and before any of us can feel that it's really in the best interest of the city. Thank you for your time and be pleased to entertain any questions that there are.
Thank you. Questions? Comments?
Madam Chair, I do have a question. Would you speak to the participation, the involvement that Nashville Soccer Club had with the community, with the surrounding community and with the Nashville community as a whole?
Sure, that goes back, and I apologize, my memory may not remember everything, that was started over six years ago. And so it was a combination of events where the community was brought in to work on charrettes, talking about the types of things they would like to see in the space as we were working with mixed use and the others. We met with many neighborhood groups. I can't tell you how many meetings I sat through, as well as a significant number of public meetings where, this is a very passionate site, there's many that are for changes, many against. And I'd have to go back and look at our notes, but it was over, at least over a two-year period by the time we got through all of our legislation. And anytime that a neighborhood group reached out, we continued to participate in the fairgrounds Neighborhood Impact Advisory Committee to address concerns raised by neighbors, as we're still, you know, kind of working out the kinks with the stadium from over a year. But it was a significant involvement and I'd be happy to get more specifics for you.
Thank you.
Mary, thank you for sharing with us. Okay, we have another question.
Quick question. This is just my, I'm really big into soccer, football, and I'm very familiar with stadiums set up domestically as well as internationally. And then like, it's a community thing. It's like, the stadiums were really built in a community, especially in like Europe. I don't know and I'm not familiar with raceways, streetways. Are they the proximity of a of a speedway to a community? It can't be, and this is a question for everybody here, like is it, you said it's how far from the dwelling, the housing?
From the housing, I would have to talk to our mixed-use folks. It's probably between 75 and 100 feet. And the information that I gave you today was from the construction folks. It depends how you measure the distance from the edge of the soccer stadium to the grandstands or to one of the turns, roughly 300 to 500 feet.
And I guess my next question is how, I don't know if this is not directed at you, but for the raceways, is it traditional, it's standard to have a raceway in a community like this, in the fairgrounds?
I'm probably not the best one to answer that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's it.
Good question. We'll work on getting you an answer. All right. Thanks again, Mary, for that update. And I think finally, we are to have District 17 Councilmember Kobe Sledge share with us about the impact on this project within the community.
Thank you, directors. I was asked to come to talk a little bit about my role in all this and then sort of what I've heard from the community. So I wanted to similarly give kind of a brief presentation and then absolutely more questions. So I've been a District 17 Councilmember for almost eight years and have lived in the Wedgewood, Houston neighborhood for 14. So we've had a long, drawn-out conversation about the history, the present, and the future of the fairgrounds over that time. The first capital spending plan that I was part of allocated funding that would eventually become what was the first phase of Fair Park here. And in several subsequent capital spending plans and allocations, we've put lots, I mean, when I say lots, I mean like $100 million into this facility when it comes to infrastructure, when it comes to expanding Fair Park, when it comes to the buildings that we are in. And we have always been willing to invest in the property. That investment, as you heard from Esquivar, has also been from the private sector. It has come in the form of Geodes and the MAC and the bonds. And we have put a lot of public money into revamping a facility that quite frankly was very closed off to the surrounding neighborhoods. And when I say closed off, I mean literally surrounded by barbed wire. So when you came in today, the construction that you see outside is the second phase of Fair Park. You're literally seeing the grading for the continuation of the Browns Creek Greenway. That has taken almost the entirety of the eight years that I have served on council. So over the years, what I'm trying to kind of paint the picture for is we've been putting the pieces in place when it comes to the fairgrounds. We've been talking about open green space. That Fair Park will be 46 acres of this property that surrounds the Browns Creek, really floodway, not just floodplain. We have the facilities that we're in. When we first started these conversations, we were in facilities up on the hill that were much less climate-controlled than the ones that we are sitting in right now. So we built these facilities. We publicly funded these facilities. Obviously, we did the deal with Nashville SC, with Nashville Soccer Holdings for Geodes Park. And then the one final piece here of this property has been the speedway. So over the years, I can tell you in those early capital spending plans, there had been money indicated for improvements to the speedway, specifically improvements to the grandstands. We did improve the bathroom facilities in the grandstands, but we were going to be doing more. And what occurred over the years is that there was always this specter of, well, maybe NASCAR will come, maybe somebody else will pay for this over the years. And that kind of continued and continued and continued. It never was really coming to fruition. And then in sort of, I'd say, late 2019, the administration asked me about, if we were to do something at the speedway, kind of what would you want to see? If we went down this path, what would you want to see? And the two main issues that I brought up was one, safety, because there are aspects of the facility right now that are not safe for anyone who's participating. I can tell you, I've walked those grandstands, and the concrete has shifted under my feet as I've walked up the steps. It has not been, under several studies over the years, it has not been deemed safe, the track surface for either the drivers or the spectators. It does not meet the current safety standards. And then the second piece that I said was reducing neighborhood impact. When my wife and I bought our first and only, to this day, home in Wedgewood, Houston, there were really no community agreements in place. We didn't have agreements on curfews. We didn't have agreements on mufflers. We didn't have agreement on dates. We didn't have agreements on practices. It was kind of just whatever could be put in was put in. And over the years, community members have worked really hard, along with, in conjunction a lot of times with Fair Board members, to establish a channel of communication and to establish standards. And when we went through this conversation that involved, quite frankly, the charter, I remember back in 2011, what came out of a lot of those conversations was putting some standards in, putting some muffler standards in, putting some schedule standards in that had evolved over time, and include practice standards. The establishment of what was called the Neighborhood Impact Advisory Council, which still runs today and works in conjunction with the Fair Board and its executive director, that's made up of community members from several impacted communities. We've tried hard to have a geographic representation, so that anyone who's in the surrounding area has a neighborhood leader or a community leader who's able to report back to that community or that neighborhood, hey, here's what's going on. And they meet monthly. So we've established what I think is a pretty good partnership and communication channel. And as these conversations have continued, the thing that has dismayed me the most is the total lack of that communication channel. I have been left out of conversations over the years. The community's been left out of these conversations over the years. And what we've kind of reached is we reached a point, I reached a point last year, in which I didn't feel like I could trust what was being told to me, because it would be months, if not a year, that would go by between some announcement being made, silence, and then, oh, some other announcement's about to be made, council member, we'd like your feedback. Sometimes those contacts from the administration happened within an hour of the announcement coming out. So September of last year, another announcement was going to be made, saying that there was a framework of a deal. I asked the administration, this was about 4:00, 4:30 in the afternoon one day, I asked the administration, can I have at least the basics of this? I will meet with you, but can you just give me some kind of basics so I know what to prepare for? I was told, no, you can't have the basics. Four hours later, after 8 o'clock on that weekday night, a Fair Board agenda was amended, came out with an amended Fair Board agenda, because they were going to take a new process. They were going to be talking about other renovations and other ways to improve this speedway. And at that point, I told the administration I was done, because I couldn't have a trusted partner to know what was going to be happening at the speedway. In the time since, the proposed LSE has gone to the state and has worked to preempt us to overturn the 27-vote threshold that has been on every facet of the property you're on today. In fact, we're sitting in an area where I had to have 27 votes. I had to carry the legislation. I had to have 27 votes to demolish the cinder block bathroom. That was the only thing sitting here. I had to have 27 votes. And that was on the council, Mr. Cooper. We had 27 votes for everything. And now we have three different pieces of litigation going on, which I am a party to one, quite frankly, because I took an oath to uphold the charter, and the state has attempted to preempt that charter. And that is the team that is coming to you today, asking for revenue bonds. It is a team that went around us as Metro and has attempted to preempt what has guided every facet of the redevelopment of this property. In addition to those problems, it does not meet the two things that I set out to accomplish, and one of which is neighborhood impact. You've heard on facets of the lease about the limits and what doesn't apply to the limits. It does not reduce the number of races, and in fact, exempts several of those races from the standards that we currently have in place. And I want to do a quick aside. I think the relationship we have with the local operator right now, between the local operator and the community, is the best that it has been in the 14 years that I've lived here. The local operator does an excellent job running the current events. He often finishes before the curfew, because he runs the operation well. The previous two operators got sued by the city. At this point, he hasn't. So I consider that a win for us. But he's done a great job. And I, for the first time, frankly, have had the ability to have some expectations put in place as to know what's coming when it comes to a practice schedule or comes to a race schedule. And I can communicate that well to my constituents, and the Neighborhood Impact Advisory Council can communicate that well to their individual neighborhoods and communities. So we talked about neighborhood impact. When this exempts, I don't know, I brought a copy of what the impact is based on the consultant sound study. I do not know if you have this, so that's why I brought it. But the consultant's own sound study shows that when a NASCAR race runs, I'm gonna hold this up so you can see it. Everything in yellow is an increase in sound. Everything in yellow is an increase. Everything in red is an increase of five decibels or more. The only portion that significantly reduces the blue and the green. That portion is not where the proposed sound wall is. That portion is where the mixed-use development is. The mixed-use development will serve as a greater and more effective sound wall than the sound wall, proposed sound wall itself will do. And I have a problem with that, because that means that residents who live in that mixed-use development are going to be our sound wall. The sound is going to hit them first. So it doesn't reduce neighborhood impact. And the other issue I have is about neighborhood safety. That's part of what I just mentioned. Safety for neighbors in that area will be significantly decreased. So I come to you and I tell you that I'm a little disappointed that the finance director, nobody from the finance department is here, because I can't speak to you about the finances. What I can tell you is the experience that I've had over my eight years as a council member and as 14 years as a resident with this particular property and the impact and evolution that it's had. And I'm a little disappointed that this is where we've arrived, to revenue bonds that have, for sure, have some issues, have questions that you've raised, that others have raised, and the fact that we have a history of investing in this property in other ways. We have put several capital spending plans, meaning general obligation bonds. We have put general obligation bonds toward this facility. This facility that we're sitting in was funded by general obligation bonds. The park that's happening outside is funded by general obligation bonds. And the issue that I have is what's all of a sudden being called this obligation or this just pending thing that'll happen any moment regarding repairs to the speedway. These are repairs we've known about for years and in fact had general obligation bonds ready to go for pieces of them. And instead, we were told, no, there's something that might be out there. Well, it has arrived, and it's not sufficient. And so I, as a council member, in the four meetings that I have left, have to consider what's best for the community, what's best for the facility, and what's best for Metro. I am convinced that the deal that's before you is not best for all three. And I think there are other ways to discuss this. There are better ways to discuss this, and I would hope that everyone has the opportunity to do so. I just don't see how this proposal provides that. Thank you, members, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, councilmen. Are there any questions? Comments? Not? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So we've been here for a while, but I think it would be a good opportunity now to hear from President of Bristol's Motor Speedway. We're going to invite Jerry Colwell for a moment.
Thank you for letting me join you today. Appreciate it. And so grateful for your service. I know this is a volunteer board, and we have had a long working relationship with the Fair Board. So grateful for them and grateful for each one of you for what you do. I look forward to continuing this conversation and the opportunity to address any questions that you guys have now or as we move along. This would include our proposed plans to renovate, restore the speedway, revenue contributions that according to independent analysis conducted for the city comfortably cover the debt, as you heard earlier, and our organization's commitment to be responsible for capital investments to maintain the speedway for the next 30 years. Before making my comments, I do want to address, it's been touched on, but the negative emails that you guys have been receiving. We understand that you are a volunteer board and unelected. We did ask our supporters to not contact you, to make sure they share their thoughts with the council. But they're happy to, we're happy to connect you with anyone that you would like on the supporter side. Mayor Cooper recognized that this city was lacking an economically viable plan for the speedway, one of the largest and certainly the most historic facilities of the fairgrounds campus at 118 years old. This fairgrounds speedway is the second oldest continually operating racetrack in the country. And for context, it's one year older than the Ryman Auditorium. As we talked with Mayor Cooper, we both saw the potential of a partnership that could restore one of those most special tracks in all of motorsports and shift that financial burden that's been referred to several times from the taxpayers and those general obligation bonds over to create a financially sustainable enterprise from the activities that would be at the speedway campus. A long-term agreement would responsibly address the city's charter requirements to keep the speedway operational and by breathing new life into the track, truly completes a comprehensive renovation of the fairgrounds property that cannot be possible without addressing the fairgrounds speedway. What the proposal does, it would enact a viable plan to address disrepair of the speedway by shifting that massive and growing financial responsibility from the taxpayers over to our company as a long-term operator. In general dollars and cents, according to detailed analysis that Metro commissioned through an organization called Driven International, those conditions break down along these lines. Some $40 million in current deferred maintenance, repairs that require immediate action due to the safety concerns, including resurfacing in the track and pit areas, rebuilding and expanding the tracks outside barrier and catch fence, installing modern, safer barrier systems. Beyond the safety needs, the consultants urged the modernization of the facility to address the outdated hospitality and fan experiences, stating that the concessions and restrooms have not been updated in many years. And Americans with Disabilities Act compliance generally across the venue is considered to be lackluster. Overall, the fairgrounds is a much-loved and historic speedway. It's a great central location, but it does need some repair, and it needs some love in several key areas, as it will function well for the next 30 years. As you are aware, we propose a major component of modernization would be a 20-foot sound mitigation wall around the track. That would be part of an overall plan to reduce auto racing noise by 50%, as you heard Chairwoman Weiner mention earlier. Additionally, we propose to rebuild the speedway interior, make it efficient space that would create substantial new parking for soccer, for flea market, and other non-racing events, and shift all future improvements, including the ongoing maintenance and modernization away from the taxpayers, and it would come onto our company. Overall, that financial burden would shift well over $100 million off of taxpayers. This creates significant annual revenue for the Fair Board, as well as a million-dollar rent payment each year from us, a share of sponsorship, and event revenue sharing. Again, you heard this earlier, but the independent review of our business plan by CSL conducted at the request of Metro Finance projects that the revenues, which we consider to be conservative, have a revenue debt coverage ratio of 1.2 to 1. Rehabs the speedway, long neglected on a campus that otherwise has been modernized to complete comprehensive renovation and ensures that the city can fulfill its charter obligation to operate the speedway. We are discussing the return of NASCAR races. That would be every other year, so once every 730 days. That will be worth about $200 million in economic generation in today dollars going forward. The renovation, what this does not do, the renovation does not cost $160 million. It would not be a cost borne by taxpayers. As a result of the contributions from the state, the CVC, taxes, and other revenue generated by Bristol's activities at the speedway, the total revenue bond proceeds for the projects is estimated, as you heard earlier, to be $80 to $85 million. The CSL report makes it clear that the revenues from that project, not Metro tax dollars, are more than efficient to cover the debt payments. It would not expand the racing schedule, as Sunho said. It would not expand the racing schedule, as Son has said. Bristol would maintain the historic ten-race weekends, which could not be increased, and reduce the number of dates that driver, that drivers can rent the track. Currently, that's at twenty-five, and that number would go down in our agreement to at least twenty. A NASCAR race with a new sound barrier would not be louder than the current All-American four-hundred, and all of the other races would be substantially less. We would not fill the calendar with capacity events at the Speedway, and most of the auto racing events will be local races with two to three thousand fans, and Speedway capacity would only be met about twice a year. The NCVC partnership would utilize the Speedway for revenue-producing events as well. And again, we appreciate your service and what you've done. I do want to touch on a few other things. There was a reference to four weeks of racing. There wouldn't be four weeks of racing. A NASCAR race is typically two days' worth of racing. What they're, what they're referring to is there are four-week blocks where we have rights to use the facility, the campus as a whole that's controlled by the Fair Board, and part of our rent payment to the Fair Board, that's what was contemplated, and the purpose for that is to allow us to set up other things that would go along with the NASCAR race. But it's not four weeks' worth of racing. There's still only ten weekends, as is currently right here. We can't add to that. Even the NASCAR race that's contemplated has to fit within that ten number that's, that is there. And we believe, we have known, we've been in this conversation for six years. We have been in this conversation and tried to be a very good partner here on this property. We've had over thirty community meetings. Councilman Sledge was kind enough early on this process to give us a list of everyone he wanted us to meet with, and we've met with all of those multiple times. Working in hand-in-hand with the Fair Board, there've been, as you heard Chairwoman Weiner say earlier, multiple opportunities for the public to come and share their thoughts. We really believe that we can be a great partner and that we can take what has been a challenge on this campus and the last piece of the puzzle and make it something special, make it to where it fits in with everything else. I would invite all of you, this weekend, there's a race coming up on Sunday, come out and, and enjoy that, I'll be out here, happy to give anyone a tour. I'm glad to hear the current operator is doing well, we're partnering, he's a partner in this, we would continue to operate local racing with that current operator, because we agree, we think he's doing the right things and he would want to, we would want him to represent us in that area. The other piece that I would just touch on is this is not a new building, you know, this is a racetrack that's been there for a hundred and eighteen years. So it's very different when we start talking about comparing it to other projects of building new buildings and, and maybe a fran, a team franchise comes along with that, and you have to have a, you have to have a team or a, a home for that. This is very different. This is a facility that has been here for a really long time. We operate twelve racetracks across the country. We have been talking with Metro for the, the length of time that we have because we think it's something special, we think it's something that deserves to be saved, but we believe that it needs to be modernized. And we believe that we can do that modernization with the sound wall and the other measures that can be put in place and make it something that everyone can be really special of, excuse me, can be very proud of. And the last thing I would touch on is just, this is a unique venue, again, but it's been here for a hundred and eighteen years. There are other venues that are in city limits. I mean, Indianapolis Motor Speedway is surrounded by housing. This weekend, NASCAR for the first time will be running in Chicago, and they're running on the streets of Chicago, which is a very neat experience and something different. So again, I don't want to take more of your time, you guys have been very generous to let us come and share, and we appreciate you and all that you're, you're doing, and happy to answer any questions now or later.
Madam Chair, Jim, would you mind commenting on Councilman Sledge's concerns, current concerns, and the fact that it appears he seems to feel that he was left out of, allowed the process?
Yeah, and I, we have been in contact with Councilman Sledge many times, trying to meet, I know others have as well, I think he was referring to some conversations with the mayor's office, I wasn't privy to that. We've worked very closely with the mayor's office, with the Fair Board, and tried to make this a very open dialogue and open conversation, and we still welcome that. We want to be good partners, we want this to make sense, we believe it can make sense for everyone, and are excited and anxious to have that, continue that conversation.
Any other questions?
Jerry, thank you. Can you speak to efforts to promote women's professional sports through Bristol Motor Speedway? I mean, that's an important effort at this committee, and if you could just touch on that.
Yeah, we, we help sponsor and have hosted many times and have several of our women executives in a program right now called Women in Motorsports, because we think it's extremely important, not only for just the, the future of our sport as a whole, we want to make sure that it's a diverse group, and specifically with that, we hosted just a few weeks ago, we had a, a Women in Motorsports events where we welcomed women executives in motorsports and celebrated them and thanked them for their efforts. We also have sponsored as a company at our other facilities, the Women in Motorsports Conference, to bring others, bring those women together so that they can know that there are other folks like them blazing trails within our sport, and we're really proud of them.
Madam Chair, I have a question with, with regards to your design team. Based on what John Cooper said earlier, the entire design team is in place now. At least that's what I assume from what he said. What was your effort to use local design consultants on this project?
And I'm, I'm happy to set up a conversation with our engineers that did that. I know our efforts were strong, we wanted to make sure that we abide by Metro standards. That's been, from the very beginning, even though we were, we're funding this upfront, we said we want to do it by the Metro standards. So I'm happy to, to get the folks that kind of had, were heading that up for us and let them have a conversation with you to answer any questions.
Well, I, I would like to take that opportunity to do so, because I'm, I'd like to also know if there's still an opportunity for local firms to participate in this process.
There absolutely is, there absolutely is, because subs have not been, we've not hired subs, so we, we fully expect to use many locals for that.
I'm speaking of design consultants.
Okay. Again, let me get the, let me get the folks that are in the room, and y'all can speak the exact same language on exactly what pieces were covered, and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, question? Need to figure out how to phrase it. Councilman Sledge spoke of the overturning of the charter going from twenty-one members to twenty-seven. Can you speak to that and where you lie in that situation?
It wasn't anything we were a party of. There's a, there's a local group that did that, as I understand it. I personally, and, and our attorneys, through this process, when they've looked at it, have said that they didn't believe twenty-seven was needed, that this was a twenty-one project, because there's not a change of use. The twenty-seven was tied to change of use, but I'm way out of my lane on speaking legal, legal terms, but that's, our attorneys, that's what they had viewed. This is not a change to the use of the property. This is a rehab and an improvement to an existing racetrack.
But didn't we do a whole charter vote thing on having to have twenty-seven, and now we don't?
Again, I, my understanding is the twenty-seven was there for a change of use.
John Cooper's coming to rescue you.
Yeah.
I see him moving.
He knows far more than I do.
Yes, he does. No, he knows, he knows incredible amounts. He knows a lot.
So the, the charter amendment that was passed a few years ago speaks to demolition of facilities or, or something to that effect. And our position from, from a legal standpoint was that we are replacing the grandstands with new grandstands and improving the Speedway. It was not a demolition of the premises, I think is the actual word, to do away with it, or even to move it somewhere else. Like with, with this building, the, the council passed it with twenty-seven votes because the Expo Center was being demolished and relocated. Here, it's being built in the exact same footprint as, as the existing racetrack, it, it's renovating the racetrack, so we didn't think twenty-seven was needed. The law that the, the-
But John, the voters of Nashville did.
The voters, that's correct.
Said twenty-seven.
And then what the state came in and did this past term is said, if you're, if you're just renovating an existing facility or improving an existing facility, then you don't need twenty-seven. And we know that's subject to three lawsuits right now to determine whether, you know, whether that's valid or not.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Colwell, for being here, we thank you for providing resources, and I'm sure that this committee's gonna have additional questions, and I think if we want to, if your question didn't get answered today, maybe we submit those to Monica and we can get them to the appropriate people. It's been a long meeting, and this concludes our agenda, so thank you, all of you for your input today. We thank our directors for taking additional time out of your schedules to be here. The next full board meeting is scheduled for Thursday, July twentieth, at Nissan Stadium. The finance committee will meet prior to the full board, and there will be another opportunity to ask questions related to the Speedway. In the meantime, if you have questions, Tom Cross has agreed that he would be willing to speak with you one-on-one to board members. As it relates to some of the conversations we've had today, we're gonna take a few days and digest this information, it was a lot, and we'll discuss next steps, one of which we've heard a lot today is the role that Metro Finance will play. We look forward to having a conversation with our finance director, and so those are things that we'll think about in the upcoming days. If there are no other questions or comment, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Meeting adjourned, thank you.